Welcome, welcome, uh, welcome to the June twelfth, uh, select board meeting from town Barrington. Like to use. Do a quick roll call.
Name report.
Gibson's here.
And Trey's here.
Supers here, Tracy is here, but she has stepped out for a second. Um, with that, let's do the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, founded this world with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Hardicoff, are you here?
I am here, Hardicoff here.
Um, agenda reviewed. Anybody have any questions, comments, concerns on that?
Like we're adding, um.
We are adding key to the agenda. And then if it was okay with you guys, um, under appointments, uh, letter A to move those in with the present agenda as well.
Absolutely agree with that, yes.
Excellent.
It's penises.
All right, um, looking for a, uh, motion to approve the agenda as amended. No, we're, that's the agenda as amended.
Second.
Will call them.
Hardicoff, uh, yay?
Yes.
Secoshia. Okay, um, I'm gonna have Connor read the, the comment rules and regulations as we enter public comment.
Alright, meetings are open to public, but published participation is limited. If you want to be heard by the select board, please note the two public comment portions of the meeting to speak by items on a meeting amendment and on the formal matters pertaining to the business of the select board. In addition, public hearings may be scheduled for public comment on specific matters. Speakers must be residents of the town of Barrington, property owners in the town of Barrington, and or designated representative of recognized civic organizations or businesses located in the town of Barrington. When they are addressed and permitted to speak by the chair, speakers first need to recite their name and address for the record. Visitors should address their comments to the chair and the select board as a body and not to any individual member. Each speaker shall be provided with a single opportunity for comment, limited to three minutes. Public comment shall be limited to fifteen minutes. Visitors not, visitors should not expect a response to their comments or questions since the select board may not have discussed or taken a position on the matter. Public comment is not to a dialogue between the speakers, select board, and or the town administrator. The chair will preserve strict order and decorant at all select board meetings. Obscene, violent, disruptive, disorderly comments, or those likely to induce violence, disruption, or disorder are not permitted and will not be tolerated. Complaints regarding town staff should be directed to the town.
With that, do I have anybody, uh, for public comments, either here, in-house, or online? Please raise your hand.
If you're on the phone, online, you have to press star six to unmute yourself, wait to be recognized by the chair. Be a second opportunity for public comment towards the end of the meeting.
Okay, I don't see anything online or in-house.
I don't either.
So, we're gonna close public comment. And we are going to move on to public hearings and invite guests. First on the, uh, list is the school board liaison, um. If you're participating remotely, please raise your hand and we'll call on them.
I'll see you.
Maybe next time. Alright, onto the, uh, acceptance of emergency management performance grant, communications tower generator grant. Uh, does the board get a chance to look at this? Any questions?
I had one question, which was, do we have the funds for the math? And the answer was yes, and so I would be comfortable making a motion to.
Did more than fifty percent would match with Paul thing, but yeah.
The, the last line of motion. Uh, and because this, uh, is, the minutes for this will be submitted with the grant paperwork. Uh, if one of you can, uh, read the motion, um, as, as written in, and with one exception, just say match instead of math, yeah. If, if one of the times comes, but yeah, it's public hearings, we'll give you a public comment.
So, when it be on the public hearing, we have to open up public comment, so if anybody in-house or online, if I participate, please come on up or raise your hand.
This is a seventy-five thousand dollar grant for a generator at the radio tower at one oh five Rensfield Lane. And the generator will be sized to power the entire building, recreation, and library at one oh five Rensfield.
No comment?
I see nothing along, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Should I read the motion?
You should read the motion.
Um, I make a motion to accept the terms of the emergency management performance grant, EMPG, as presented in the amount of seventy-four thousand five hundred dollars for the communications tower generator. Acknowledging that the total cost of this project is up to one hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars, in which the town will be responsible for a fifty percent, seven four thousand five hundred, up to, um, for, further authorize the town administrator to sign related documents in reference to the M, EMPG grant.
Roll call, Lou.
Um, Hardicoff, aye.
Gibson, aye. Alright, next on the public hearing invited guest was the state representative, Keith Howard.
Thank you, uh, do, do I have to state my name and address as well, or, uh?
Please.
Keith Howard and I live at one ninety-four Old Ridge Road, Stratford, New Hampshire, zero three eight eight four. Uh, I'm here today to just kinda give a little brief update, as well as to get your opinions, um, on, uh, well, specifically one bill, uh, that's going to be coming up in the New Hampshire House. Uh, so, this past Thursday, the House, uh, took up changes that the Senate had made to the budget in HB two. Uh, and I was actually one of fifty-three representatives who voted against that measure. Uh, we actually had two representatives from, uh, who represent the town of Barrington, myself from Representative Harrington. Uh, we both voted against this budget. Uh, I had some issues, uh, regarding voting for it, including a, uh, one and a quarter million dollar cut to Barrington schools, uh, that were changed due to the Senate's education formula, uh, as well as the removal of, uh, Medicaid direct funds for things like free reduced lunch, uh, and the twenty-five million dollar cut to group two retirement benefits, which are for individuals like firefighters and our, uh, first responders. Um, so, that, that was kinda something that I, I just wanted to share with all of you. But the kinda primary reason why I'm here tonight is to discuss, uh, HB two eighty-one, uh, which, uh, is a bill that would remove, uh, the, uh, least cost integrated resource plans. Uh, and Center Waters has made a significant amount of changes to this, uh, piece of legislation, uh, and has stated, uh, that all of you were in support of that legislation, and I was kind of coming to confirm that.
I don't think the select board's taking a position on it.
Okay.
Yeah, we can certainly discuss it further, they might need a little bit more background.
Yes, uh, so, the changes made would actually add, uh, a section to enable municipal host net metering, uh, which I'm not necessarily sure, I think that was the part the Senator Waters was discussing with me. Uh, and I, I was just coming to let you know that I was not necessarily sure if, uh, eliminating the least cost integrated resource planning, which requires utilities to submit regular analysis on energy options to the PUC. Uh, and just recently, uh, within the past decade, I don't remember the exact date, uh, but Liberty Utilities, uh, went through a project known as the Granite Bridge. But the least cost integrated resource planning forced them to, uh, consider using existing pipelines, which actually saved ten percent uh, of the overall cost, which would actually mean that as ratepayers, we'd actually be paying less. Um, and of course, this would also eliminate a lot of public input on a lot of these, uh, different, uh, infrastructure projects that utilities are taking up.
Question, um, the, so, SB sixty-eight, uh, was legislation, uh, this round that was voted in expedient to legislate. Part of SB sixty-eight was, uh, expanding the, um, ability for municipalities to, um, join together and form a solar installation of up to five megawatts.
Yep.
Currently, the limit's one megawatt, cities, and you have to use it all in the community is the requirement now. Uh, SB sixty-eight was going to allow municipalities, smaller municipalities to band together. Uh, so, the Energy Committee in Barrington, um, had reached out, uh, to Representative Harrington, who was on the Energy Committee in the House, and advocated for, uh, the passage of that legislation. My understanding is that, uh, that same language, although didn't pass with SB sixty-eight, was tacked on to other legislation.
Yeah.
That, this bill?
Uh, that may be this bill, uh, I'm not necessarily sure, because, uh, did you say SB or HB?
SB sixty-eight is what the original legislature.
So, this, it may be the original, uh, SB sixty-eight language, uh, but this piece of legislation that is being tacked on to, uh, would potentially open up additional liability, uh, and issues for Granite staters, and that's kind of the, kind of primary issue. It's more the fact that we're eliminating the least cost integrated resource planning. Uh, I do support the municipal host net metering, I think that it's a common sense idea. Um, but it's just kinda the overarching bill that it's being tacked on to. Uh, so, I, I appreciate the, uh, the comment on that and, uh, kind of filling me in. Uh, but I guess if there are any other questions about other legislation, uh, that I've voted on, uh, or if you have any other questions about what's going on in the New Hampshire House, I'd be happy to answer those questions.
I know it was really short notice, guys, that he's come in, so, uh, if you have questions, I'll go to you.
Yeah. That, that's okay, I, I will say, um, I should probably double check my July calendar, just because, uh, I, I do apologize. Mondays are not a very good day for me, uh, but, uh, cause I am currently in between, uh, classes and we're on summer break. Uh, I do have a little bit more open, uh, for July and August. So, if, uh, you'd prefer me to come back at one of those dates so that I can field some questions, uh, just let me know.
Absolutely, for sure. And don't hesitate to reach out if you have, uh, issues that the state has that you'd like to feedback at the board or the town on. Uh, even if it's not at a meeting, we, we can, uh, communicate, happy to connect with our people.
Of course, yeah, well, I appreciate it, and, uh, feel free to.
We have, we have one question.
Yes.
I have a like question, but our, our next select board meeting is scheduled for July tenth, so, so Monday, July tenth, and you want to fix in your schedule?
Uh, I can double check, but I think that should be okay.
Cool.
Again, on the fourteenth of August, thanks.
Okay, yeah, I'll make sure that's in my calendar.
Thank you. There's no of you?
Yes, thank you for having me.
Good to put a face with the name, thank you.
Of course, yeah, I, I did leave some, uh, uh, cards over there, if any of you need, uh. I did leave one on up all of your desks, but feel free to put that in an easily accessible place so that anybody who comes in can grab one. Alright, thank you so much.
Thank you, thanks for coming.
Excellent, well, that wraps it up for the public hearing, we're gonna invite the guests, and we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. I know that we agree the consent agenda is amended. Good night, sir.
Good second thoughts. Hardicoff, aye.
Gibson, aye.
Secoshia. Excellent, moving on to appointments. Uh, we removed A, and we rearranged that into our consent agenda. So, planning board, good, uh, Mr. Smith has submitted an application to join the planning board, or zoning board of adjustment on May twenty-fifth. Uh, Mr. Smith, um, Connor met with Mr. Smith after reviewing the roles of each board. The planning board seems to better align with Mr. Smith's interests. Um, if you guys have any questions, comments, discussion on this? No? Okay, um, moving on to energy committee, Cynthia. Hawthington, um.
Hawthington, Dr. Hawthington.
Hawthington, so.
Hawthington.
Right there. Agent Gashon on this case?
Questions? We have been. She bend your names? Not yet, your summer's gonna open. Next month or so.
I think she's served on two other committees prior to this, or two other, um, designated boards.
Yeah, the previous energy, maybe, whatever.
Excellent, okay, let's break us on to staff support, Mr. Carter.
Fantastic, so, uh, here we are, our first and only, uh, meeting, regular select board meeting in June, I've got the work anniversaries. Ian, uh, I love putting these lists together and seeing that so popular, uh, it's really fantastic. So, Tim Booty has gone to fire department for twenty-eight years. Scott Young, uh, who is a retired police chief and strapper, uh, continues to work in our police department where he started, um, for twenty-five years. Katie Perry, also in the police department, has served for the town for eighteen years. Uh, John Hawkins, building inspector, enforcement officer, has ten years with the town this month. Uh, Eric Baker, who's currently a police sergeant, has six years in Barrington. Jacob Cummings in the fire department, six years. Uh, Donald Morris, who's currently our K nine officer, um, with K nine Indy, has gone to the Barrington Police Department for five years. Tiffany Cottle, uh, was hired this month, four years ago. Christopher Cook, library custodian, started in town three years ago, and our human resources administrator started in Barrington two years ago this month. Uh, so, appreciate the longevity of those employees. Um, moving on, just for the, uh, select board's public awareness, uh, so, on May twenty-second, uh, we represented from the AFSCNE Council ninety-three, uh, lady representative, filed a petition for certification, uh, with the New Hampshire P L R B, Public Employee Labor Relations Board. Uh, I have a copy online, and I included a copy in your packet. Uh, the proposal to start, uh, union, uh, for the highway department, uh, they submitted it with, uh, a full-time, part-time truck driver labor equipment operator positions. Uh, it's since been clarified, although they haven't updated, submitted, uh, updated documents yet. Uh, but the proposal is going to be to include the highway department and the transfer station. Uh, so, the highway department, truck driver labor, equipment operators, transfer station, lead attendant, and attendants. Uh, and so, that employee total is twelve. Um, and so, the, uh, town's labor attorney worked with the attorneys from the AFSCNE Council ninety-three to work out, uh, get that information updated, and I understand that they'll be submitting updated paperwork.
Can I ask a quick question?
Please.
Um, is there a reason that they excluded the administrative assistant role in that department?
Um, so, my guess is, although I don't know, uh, but you can't have a union with individuals that supervise others in the.
Oh, okay.
Transfer station administrator supervised the lead attendant and attendants, uh, so that would be my guess, but I do know. Uh, so, uh, like I said, they intended with the transfer station positions, uh, and so, no, no actions are required by the select board this time. Uh, but I want to make sure the select board is aware, uh, that the boys are exploring their rights and, uh, enabling statutes, RSA two seventy-three dash. Uh, so, likely more to come on that, but nothing at this point. Also, just for your information, uh, the treasurer created a new bank account, um, for the purpose of reconciling credit card payments. So, we don't have a specific timeline yet, but in the near future, we'll be, uh, starting to collect credit card payments at the town park and tax collector's office. Uh, this is something we've been working on for a really long time. Unfortunately, there's a lot of nuances that don't make it super easy for municipality, uh, and especially with the reconciling of payments. Uh, you know, we have to tie everything out, um, they, it's going to create more work with treasurer, the finance administrator, and others, uh, but worth it. It's good customer service, we'll be able to start out by collecting MasterCard Visa, Discover, American Express, and PayPal. People will be able to exercise that option online and in, in the office. Uh, so, we're really excited about that, more details to come. Uh, but in the short term, as we're still preparing everything, we've got a new bank account where those credit card payments will go to make it easier for them to write it down.
Will people, when they're paying, say, real estate tax, be paying the three percent that the card would normally deduct? So, they will cover their own fees?
They will.
For the convenience, okay, very good.
I actually believe it's three and a quarter percent.
Okay.
Um, and so, that will be, and, and that's one of the nuances, um, that it took a little while to work out and find the right credit card processor that would do best by our essence, maybe could would say.
Okay.
So, I have a couple of training opportunities, um, pretty soon, one tomorrow is the Wright Snow Public Meetings Workshop, and then the Heart of Welfare Administration, um, in a couple of days. Uh, the workshop circuit drives up a little bit over the summer, uh, but I'll be glad to, to share more training opportunities that have become available. Um, reminder about our formal strategic planning session, so that's, uh, two weeks from tomorrow, remember that's on a Tuesday. We'll meet at six, and then the session will start at six thirty, uh, included a printed copy, uh, of the goal document, uh, that I've created. Not for discussion tonight, but I wanted to get that in your hands, um, so we could all be on a level playing field, uh, for discussion of those goal areas. Um, I also prepared a copy of that to the facilitator, um, so we can all start from a, a low baseline. And municipal office administrator Cottle, uh, has something for you to talk.
Um, first, usual, um, request for signatures, and then cut smaller, and then agreement, Hudson, Sanderson, um. I agree with them, and then assuming it gets approved later, there will also be a doc. And then, except from that, um, I want to bring up, uh, road names. So, back in twenty fourteen, um, I assume in the interest of making things a little bit quicker for folks when they're building, um, or like the subdivision or for other reasons, um, the select board approved a list of names that don't have to be, um, that don't have to go through the process basically of being approved by the select board. Again, it makes it a little bit quicker, especially in summertime, when we don't have so many meetings. Um, sometimes having a road name just moves things along a little bit quicker for folks. So, um, in the interest of doing that, um, I would like to update the previously approved road name list. Um, it was approved nine years ago, there are a pile of names that have been pulled from it. Um, twenty-seven have been used, plus three actually were approved today. Um, and then we have, uh, several that are conflicts, um, so, I'm asking for a couple of things. Um, first, I'd like you to, um, submit names that you'd like to see included. Um, also, to authorize staff to assign appropriate suffixes. Um, different road suffixes have different meanings. Um, Erin Paradise looks up what is the most appropriate one, and she assigns them accordingly, um. And also, if any conflicts with E nine, uh, arise with the names, with, um, E nine one one, or, um, if we spot something that is an issue, we would like for you to give, authorize us to pull that name from the list. Um, and sometimes it's as simple as a different suffix needs to be used than somebody would prefer or whatnot. But if you could let staff and have that little way officially, that would be great. Um, any questions?
Mr. Bush. What, the yellow and red mark, the ones that are in the call?
So, yes, so the yellow are the names that have been used. The red are names that shouldn't be used, and we haven't been allowing people to use either. Uh, those ones have been, uh, there, we found some issue with them, some of them, they're too similar, some, some of them, um, I mean, most of them are actually just too similar, um. And then, so, if you could submit your suggestions to me, um, whether there's something that you would like to have removed from that list or added to that list, I'm going to start with this. I don't wanna start from scratch, you know, um. And I appreciate it.
Excellent, thank you.
And then we'll bring that back on July tenth.
Alright. Alright, that brings us to the old business portion of this meeting. The Barrington Community Committee, uh, Community Power Aggregation. You guys, any questions, comments, concerns, questions?
I appreciated the detail in which they delved into the questions we had asked, so that we could best protect the interest of the residents.
Okay, the, the. Okay. Um, what? Motion?
The Aggregation, the Community Power Coalition, the National Power is breathing, legal review. Andrew appoints Paul Penn, which director, and Dan Federico is the alternate to the CPCMH force.
Bill Second? Will Call?
Hardicoff, aye.
Gibson, aye.
Secoshia.
Awesome, that's a big step, and reflects a lot of hard work by the Energy Committee members.
Yeah. Excellent.
Thank you, everyone, I appreciate that.
Paul Banis, Chair of the Energy Committee.
Thank you for, for your work.
So, lots of hard work.
Already, uh, making our way down to the new business, um, before we get into, uh, the, uh, like, like marks come up, um, as we're gonna discuss what our contractor makes. So, I hate the fact that this has become a yearly discussion at this point. Um, I believe it was last November, uh, you people approved a ten dollar an hour increase for our private plow contractors, which was greatly appreciated. At that point in time, that brought us up to a par with what the state was offering. Immediately thereafter, the state raised their rates to a hundred and fifteen dollars an hour, which put us behind the eight ball immediately. Um, I hate to keep coming to the well on this, but the situation is really, really escalating. Uh, it's a bidding war at this point for private plow contractors, I hate to use the term, but that's where we're at. Um, last year, we lost one of our longtime contractors. Um, he passed on, sadly missed. Um, another resident bought his truck, gave us the winter, which was greatly appreciated, uh, but now he's moved on to the state garage up in, uh, Northwood. So, that leaves us with a very big gap. Um, another thing that's happened is we have revamped the private contractor plow contracts to include more insurance, mostly for the protection of the town, but also for the protection of the contractor, although they can't quite see that, all they see is more money. So, anyway, it's more money out of their pocket.
Much more money.
Oh, I would say maybe thirty-five hundred bucks, just off the top of my head.
And how many hours does the average contractor work for us?
Hmm.
In the season?
I, I can get you number that for just second.
Okay.
We did an analysis, uh, two years ago, obviously it varies, but we.
Sure.
We averaged over three, so I can.
Okay, that'd be great.
Yeah.
So, cut the, the, the short of it, I think, I think it's either gonna come down to where we need to get back and be competitive with pay to, uh, maintain the excellent expectation of what people, uh, know that our roads are. Or if we don't come up to par, or just subpar, um, you know, residents are gonna see, uh, a deep line in service just because of the amount of men, or the, the amount of people that we have in the workforce. Um, the side roads will suffer if we, we, we may pull it off in, in a winter that's not too horrible, with, with the, with the resources that we have, it's gonna be tough. But the problem that I'm looking forward to is next year, and the year after, when we got handed a few more subdivisions, this one here, namely. Um, that's really gonna, it goes, it goes to desperate at that point. So, you as our professional, um, what do you think that we can do to retain some help without the deep lines, or is it just against the rules? I mean, if everybody's, I, you know, and our guys looking now, I don't think we're gonna have guys looking as if they're floating with the plow now, it's right.
No, if, if you're gonna find anybody, you kinda gotta do it now. Um, and basically, I, I need some bait to fish with.
So, what's the difference between the state right now and the town of Barrington?
The difference between the, the state is at a hundred and fifteen right now, Barrington's at a hundred and five. So, they, for the exact same truck.
Are you thinking the bigger question?
It, these are six-wheel trucks with plows.
If these are six wheel trucks with plow lanes.
You know what our neighboring towns are offering like Northwood and?
Uh, Northwood Nottingham, two years ago was quoting two of my contractors at a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour, that was two years ago.
You know, I think quite honestly, with the increase in the insurance at thirty five hundred, the first two hundred and thirty-three hours that they're working, the proposed increase that Mark's bringing forward is completely absorbed into that two hundred and thirty-three hours, so um. I, I, I think it's a well thought out, just like we would do a succession plan if we anticipated a retirement, I think he's looking at an appropriate plan for compensation in order to not experience interruption.
So I, I think one of the things I can, you know, just think about here. But I mean, even if we said, um, if we went to the way, um, you know, pay more money, you know, give Mark some bait to fish with, give him some bait. You know, if we either include or have a uh sign on bonus for the contractors, maybe thirty-five hundred dollars. That will take care of the added insurance and then if we have more on top of the hourly rate comparatively between one twenty-five up to one fifty, I mean, I think that could maybe say some bad thing like, I don't have to travel out of town or you know, it's, it's right there, but there's the one side, otherwise we're gonna not get anybody recruited.
Yeah.
So it's really rocking hard spot at this point.
And the, one of the big problems with this is all the guys that are doing this for the most part are getting old and they're getting tired. And it doesn't, it's not going to take much to make them say eh, don't want to do it no more, you know? You know, so I, I hate, I hate to say you got to keep dangling the carrot in front of them, but, but we do. And we need that, that bait to hire somebody that's, that's new, that's out there, that I, and I honest to God, I don't know where I'm going to find them at this point, I don't know.
Here's the. Did you post the, the jobs or are you?
Well, we, we will, once, once I have a figure, you know, I need, I need a number at some point, whether it's whether it's just, whether it's zero dollars additional, whether it's five bucks, whether it's fifteen, I need the number.
So you published that now?
Yeah.
Is any other municipality doing the guaranteed of the two weeks?
Some don't, some do, the state does.
Oh, they do.
The state does, and, and, and I really, the, the biggest thing I fear out here is the state, that's the biggest.
How many miles of state roads are running through Barrington?
I do, bunch.
Yeah.
We don't maintain obviously, but.
Right, so that's kind of what I'm thinking, like, we're competing against we're competing for the very same personnel
Yeah.
and equipment that the state is in the very same forty-six square feet, so.
Service Barrington is every market three.
It's three, Bradford, Northwoods and Gornick.
Yeah.
Uh, right now, the Gornick shed is down two trucks. The only reason they weren't down three trucks, it's because they've got a truck without an operator that they control for them and ended up having to drive all that one of himself.
Last year, certainly, but in the past. I already didn't better than the state, so we have to emulate good people and the ins people of Barrington are expecting some service. So I think, and again, you, you got what's clear, if you don't pay, you don't get something.
Well, it's gamble on the winner as well. And you know, it could be a heavy winner, it could be a light winner. I mean, you know, jumping up the board, you know, not seeing, I mean, one of the things that I would like, you know, some homework on before I made the absolute, you know, decision would be to, to see what other towns are paying, if we could find out that information, just so we could be competitive as well, I mean, I don't know if it's as easy as going up to a hundred and thirty or, you know, hey, guys, we're going to scream up to one fifty. Um.
Mark's recommendation is to go to one twenty and eighty-five on Sanders.
Yeah, I because we might get guys from rural state, they're like, hey, that's a better deal, they found, see you later, perfect. And then maybe if it's up that high, then we don't have to increase back up here.
Well, yeah, and then the year after, that would be nice to not have to keep doing this.
An average number of hours, did you find that?
Um, I did, it's about thirty thousand a year, um and that was two years ago, I really don't have access to the same numbers.
Thirty thousand for all of the private?
No. No.
The piece, yeah, piece.
But in that, but that was for a winter, so that was like the end of one budget year into the next, so.
Are you using dollars, not hours?
That's dollars.
Oh, I was like, that's physically impossible, but okay, so, okay.
Their overtime rates have five.
Yeah.
David.
I was going to say, that's the idea, and PrimeX suggested we have this feature. Hope it makes sense, um but they're not used to that, but I think your idea of a sign on bonus to include maybe just the bonus for everyone, including the people that we already have. Would be a good incentive and then raising the hourly rate to a reasonable thing.
If we asked them to participate in any type of pooled insurance where they would get a discount? They could.
No, we have a business of entities.
Well, they could be individual business entities, but I'll give an example, like in nonprofit hospitals, um, we would pool workers comp and it created a significantly reduced cost for workers' compensation in the healthcare environment specific to nonprofits and I, I don't know if that's something that's available to them.
One of the problems, we see more is they have other businesses and they probably have their insurance with those other.
Could be, yes, yeah.
We, we already have one contractor that's got the insurance that he needs.
Mm-hmm.
Then that, that insurance is comprehensive general liability. If you're gonna, if you're a, if you're a, a dirt digging guy and you run the risk of, you know, doing some underground damage or something, that's what this insurance covers.
Such a.
One of my contractors is an excavating contractor in the summer, he already has that insurance.
Mm-hmm.
The problem is one of my other contractors is only a trucker, therefore he can get by kinda with just uh scheduled auto coverage.
Sure.
It covers ninety-nine percent of what's going to happen out here, but the lawyers and the insurance companies want hundred percent.
Hmm. I think as is typical with any rate paid per hour, whether it's for an employee or a contractor, the minute that you increase it, you're going to find other entities that will match it. And so you may have to continue year after year evaluating this. Only because if you do it differently and you choose to not take Mark's recommendation this year at one twenty and you do bring it to one twenty-five or one thirty, you can expect that the other municipalities that are also trying to use the work of these contractors will raise their rates.
I would say I agree with that, but you know, I'm also in, in favor of, you know, this is just a discussion tonight, nothing going to be be made, but you know, even like a two-year contract, okay, you know, let's say if we come up ten dollars this year and then it's a promised increase and then we have the bonus, make a little contract so that way, right, hey, you know, we, we have some more time left.
I don't know if they do a two-year contract.
Yeah.
These guys are old.
At all.
I do not.
Okay, well, so am I and I don't.
Outpassing judgment.
It's that great pride, you know, that.
Well, yeah.
Keep us going.
Like I said, it's, it they don't have to look for much of an excuse to bag the whole situation, I mean, they're mentally, they're there, they're tired, but.
The, the physical aspect on it, yeah.
It's, it's where. Trust me, it's, it's not easy doing the all-night thing anymore.
Mark, since some already have the insurance that you just said, and, and for avoiding hassles of bookkeeping and accounting and all that, is it easier, do you think, just to have a higher set hourly rate?
I think so.
And then I can just figure out there.
I think so, because then if, if you go, if you go with like the sign on bonus, like what you said, okay, now you've got a guy that's he's already, he's already what he's supposed to be versus a guy that isn't, it's.
It's, you know, we have to offer it to everybody, you know, as we've done similar in the past, but.
Yeah.
So the calendar year twenty twenty-two was about three hundred hours, so I think you had said it's two hundred and thirty hours or something to pay for the additional insurance.
Yep.
And then it's about sixty-six hours
Mm-hmm.
um of, of that additional break that isn't tied to costs.
So the state right now is at one JT anywhere.
One fifteen.
One one five.
Fifteen.
And we would be going to one twenty.
Right. I want to try to get ahead of the curve a little bit by offering the one twenty over what they're doing, because, you know, as desperate as the state is, they could very well trump us again.
Hmm. I'm comfortable making a motion tonight.
There you go, but it's just a discussion.
Now you, so uh, and this is a little, little peek behind the curtain. Um, so given the temperature of the discussion in the last year, um I encourage Mark to, to bring to the select board for discussion. So you didn't think you needed to make a decision tonight, truth be told, Mark would love for you to make a decision tonight to have longer on-ramp.
Yeah.
So you don't need to, uh, Mark and I talked about, we're good, if you don't make a decision, but if you felt like you wanted to, you certainly could. Um, and there would just be longer on-ramp uh to get what you need to.
An RF, do you send out an RF PL or you just begin investigating who you can tie in for the?
Uh, try some municipal websites.
Okay.
Uh, whatever.
And as we know, trace kills have a west of the board.
Have you seen any other towns posting, like I said, like you said, Northwood Nottingham was around one twenty-five or something?
Yeah, now, that was two years ago.
Any recent ones posting there?
Haven't seen it.
Uh, I have on the municipal association, I'll see if I can find one, uh. Everybody needs him, I mean, on the, the list serves are full of people, how do we solve this problem, you know?
I'm starting with the one one is enough.
Well, uh, Tiddy just passed me a note and I, I remembered hearing something advertised, but it was a five thousand dollar sign on bonuses what the state was offering last year. Trying to attract people.
On top of the one fifteen.
That's about fifty an hour. It's an average of two fifty an hour for a full-time employee. And I realize they're not full-time, but.
Cause I, I, you know, I'll depend on, you know, if one finds anything, I mean, I'd be inclined to put them up to, to one thirty just to, i- if that would turn heads, you know, i- it's not like come over here for uh some crumbs, you know, come over for, you know, a sandwich.
So that's, yeah, that's about a twenty, it's about a twenty-five percent increase, do you need to, uh, the one-ton trucks and Sanders also require a twenty-five percent increase or we have more people willing to utilize those?
People willing to do that.
Interesting, okay.
They're not as critical as the big trucks.
Understood, so one thirty would be the recommendation and Connor, are you finding anything on the New Hampshire Municipal Association?
That I was right to, they were very good at decision making. Yeah, that's a good idea. Surely Mark will turn this into a lot. Uh, was it rated this knowledge?
Eighty, he, he's proposing to go from seventy-five to eighty-five, about a fifteen percent increase. So I would make a motion to bring the contracted heavy snow contractor rate per hour in order to cover the increase and offset some of the required insurance to one thirty per hour and the pickup truck and one, one-ton trucks with Sanders from seventy-five to eighty-five for the winter season of twenty twenty-three and twenty-four.
That's second one.
Okay, well called, though.
Heart of the class, aye.
It's. I make a name, please, not that we phrase the small in ninety.
I think that Mark just indicated that eighty-five would be appropriate, wouldn't it?
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Gee.
He said one, one, he said one thirty. He said eighty-nine, I think he needs, so I mean, all right, that's just not more than thirty. I propose that is.
Um, I, I would agree with that, how many hours generally on the smaller trucks?
Not that much less, they usually get called in maybe six to eight hours.
And they're still required to pay the additional insurance.
They still need the insurance.
I would amend to um one thirty and ninety.
Good.
You then.
A second, a second.
Great, new roll call.
Um, heart of the class.
Keeps night.
Supposedly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Very few, we get, very few things we get to offer the people of our town other than safe roads to travel on and that's fabulous.
All right, um, new business, uh, let her be, and before we get into the session about that, I'd like to, uh, chief to win.
I need to compare to that.
So you say, chief, so you say.
So the materials went out and I'm not gonna, not gonna read it, but we'll, because they are online, you have, I'm not gonna read through it because I feel that's a waste of your time. The bottom line is, the state of New Hampshire years ago, when I was a baby cop, had a program of state accreditation. I know nothing about it, uh, because it disappeared. What I know about accreditation is Kalia, um, the town of Barrington, I don't believe is ready for Kalia. It's a very intrusive process, um Dover and Durham are our two closest neighbors, are the Kalia certified. Both of those agencies have an administrator and at least one civilian employee to dedicate their lives to Kalia. Uh, it is very time-consuming, it's just round and round, it's actually three years reaccredited in, but you're spending your three years in between making sure everything's up to stop. So I've never been a proponent of Kalia, even though I believe in the system. Uh, and I don't think anybody that's known in my entire career would ever think they'd hear me say those words. I think the system is very good, Barrington's not cared for that. Uh, so I was happy when I heard that the state was going to be offering the in-state accreditation process again. Um, Debbie G. Brooks retired and I went up to a seminar in up by Lune, uh, when they had it a few weeks ago, specifically for this. Uh, they did a presentation in the morning about accreditation and power DMS. So we wanted to sit through it and see where it was, essentially what we're looking at is Kalia Lite. Um, they're following the same basic format for all the SOPs, for all the add-ons. They're just doing it to a much lesser level, uh, I can't tell you what the total number of SOPs and whatnot that Kalia has to hit is in the hundreds.
Can you tell the public what SOP stands for?
Standard operating.
I understand it, but just in case they don't, thank you.
Operating procedures, um, it's in the hundreds. What the state is going to be looking at potentially, and again, they haven't finalized everything, is about eighty-one. Um, it, it amazes me that there are agencies out there right now that exist that don't already have some of the policies they're talking about, but it, it's there, I know it's there because I talked to an administrator who just left an agency on the seacoast um who walked into that world. You're in good shape. Um, with the final product of what we're going to be needing. This is all due to the LEAC commission that the governor put together, and again, I, I think it's a great idea and I want to be on the leading edge of it. I'm here because this wasn't a thought in the process. We didn't know this was coming, I didn't know there was going to be any costs associated, uh, it, it's not a huge impact, I mean, if we look down here, we're ten to twenty-five sworn, so we're a thousand dollars for the anticipated commission costs and we're another five hundred and fifty for the power DMS side of the house. So in the end, less than sixteen hundred dollars, my twist to that is, and I guess I'm going to be a market, I'm going to ask for more, I'm not done with power DMS, uh. What they're offering for the state accreditation is nowhere near what power DMS is capable. Um, when I roll out right now a new standard operating procedure, essentially I'm putting it in email form, PDF, I mean, like you need emailing it to my folks, I'm getting a return email saying, yeah, we, we checked this out. What power DMS is capable of is it's forward-facing, so I can put a SOP in, I could put a written directive in. Uh, we can do training inside of power DMS. Um, and for the non-technologically inclined that are listening, it allows me to see exactly what they've done inside there. So if I roll out, I'm just going to pick an important one that I don't have a problem with, so I don't have to worry about it, a new pursuit policy. That's a huge liability item for the police department, it's not a small standard operating procedure, we're talking multiple, multiple pages with a lot involved there. So if I roll that out inside power DMS, it allows them to essentially click and say, yeah, I've been through this. Well, if I look and employee. Employee A spent seventeen seconds inside that SOP and clicked off that he acknowledges that he understands it, physically impossible. You can't do it. Right now, I don't know how long they spent in that email, I know how long I used to spend in emails when I was a patrol officer, yeah, sure, got it all set. Uh, our DMS allows me to see now what time they spent in there. If I want to attach a test to that SOP, it allows me to attach the test inside of power DMS, signed off, everything's attached, everything's there. So when we get audited, it's all collected. Uh, there are more expenses to power DMS. Um, I know some of the bigger agencies are paying upwards of about four thousand dollars for it, I don't think we need the full suite, I talked to the nice young lady that was there presenting. Um, she's hooked me up with a regional guy, we're going to talk a little bit, I'm probably honestly going to have power DMS come in and speak directly to you, because I don't. This is outside of my level of technological understanding.
I think it will be important to know, rolling year after year. Um, at least. For me, cost-wise would be knowing. In order to retain this, what's the maximum amount they anticipate an increase being over the course of five years?
And that's my fear with this year, they've told us it's going to be five hundred and fifty dollars for less than fifty.
Sure, but if the following year, after you've done all this work, you're not, so one of two options is there a way to extract all the data so that you can hold it in your own system in some manner? Be it, you know, I don't know.
The block five guys.
Well, so I, so, yeah, so that would be interesting to know, what do they expect for increases over the course of, you know, say, a five-year term, once you've done all the work?
What for that price, you ask them to commit to a five-year contract, that's what I've done, and that price is really low for management.
Really low?
Yeah, and that was as a result of them negotiating with, they assumed that most of the state agencies are going to get on board with this accreditation. I. I can't speak for everybody else, I know I want to be in the front, but I don't want to be on the tail.
I think any training program that's coming in under ten thousand dollars a year.
The leading of these teams. Like, and sometimes I work more than vision blocks of FOP. And everyone acknowledges them, but no one tracks. In fact, if you're not just reading it, what are you doing, do they still have ways to track for some of the people following the S O P?
No, because the following of the SOP is is real world, uh, we don't know that they're not following it until they don't follow it and then we have to take action. Um, again, which allows me to look at it and say. You didn't spend seventeen seconds in here, so I know you didn't understand it versus we established this, you read it, there was a test, you understood it, now you're accountable for the information.
And I appreciate that, but. The pursuit policy, if we have. Funny pursuits this year, did everyone follow that policy, this kind of? Is there a way to track that sort of thing?
I guess like that was a great example because pursuits, yes, um, there is a way to track it because pursuits are one of those items that we are meant, we not. By anybody outside of my control, we're mandated to report, make calls, and I track all those and review the pursuits that we've had in town. Um, we just had one, well, I guess technically we're going to call it two, about an hour last week. Um, supervisors were notified, right now, everything I have on that, don't have any problem saying it right here. Policy is handled very well in that sense, uh, we terminated, we terminated pursuits when we were supposed to terminate them, getting carried through as normally supposed to. Um, it, those pursuits were followed to a T. Have they all been like that? Nope. Uh, we've had one in the past that wasn't then. There was education afterwards.
Yeah, but again, lots of people have SOPs, everyone's written. And then.
Often goes into the, yep, no, you're absolutely right.
And if I may, um, two things, one, um, the use of the implementation of body cameras is my understanding has been helpful in. Um, Monday morning quarterbacking and involvements with the police and, you know, for that purpose, but also I'm. I'm really impressed with how our police department handles, uh, checks and balances in the department. Uh, but the supervisors that exist, not just, um, the chief, but the sergeants, uh, in reviewing arrests and and, you know. A a team effort to make sure that everybody's doing the best that they can, so, uh, I think your question was partly. Does power DMS have any way to tie those reviews that are already happening with the training and things, uh, so where somebody go, yeah, I meant to say.
Yes, thank you.
I I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that it is happening, but I think your question was, is it trackable in the same system?
I gotta believe the answer is yes, but I don't know, um. If if Deputy Chief was still sitting here, he'd be able to answer that question better, he existed within power DMS for a lot longer than I, I just started to get involved with it. I can find out, I gotta believe the answer is yes.
So how does the board feel, um? The the chief is looking for a a head nod to, uh, continue forging ahead and trying to be a leader in this and. Um, not take a backseat and get caught in the background or. Um, how do you guys feel?
It's a great idea.
I think it's an excellent idea.
Continue on, sir.
But I fully planned on going forward with the basics anyway, it's sixteen hundred dollars, I don't. I I can do that within the budget, my biggest concern as I spoke to the TA was. If power DMS winds up the end, and let's just throw a number out, four or five thousand dollars, I didn't want to invest time if it wasn't something you weren't interested in. I'm going to go forward.
Understood.
Yes, I just kind of wanted to head thought.
Will you be overseeing? You know, this role or will you assign that to somebody or? Because there's going to be a lot of people.
Yeah, so yeah, yes, I'm going to be involved in it myself. I, as we go forward with the hiring process for the next deputy chief. That's going to be something that I'm looking for, um, Deputy Chief Brooks was that guy that I would have leaned on for this. The incoming decade, Deputy Chief is going to have to have a strong background in. Policy accreditation, et cetera, et cetera, um, so yes, I'll be involved, I'm also going to be wanting to lean heavily on the DC for that.
Technology and policing.
Yeah.
Would you mind hanging on for, let's see. Let's see, C is unlicensed.
Select board number Haricop actually has some good questions, and if you don't mind, I'll discuss a little bit about the answers, so. The dogs for both the town clerk and the police chief are just kind of a a thorn in the side. It's it's small money, I told, um, Tracy earlier, we collect about sixteen thousand dollars a year, it's not for the money, it's a requirement of the state. And I'll say it's antiquated, although Rob might have a better perspective of of how. Important it's to force people to do this, but the. Enabling legislation came about when it was really important to contain the rabies, uh.
That's the bottom line.
Virus, right, virus. Rabies virus, so this was the way, and and the fees haven't gone up since then, right? So that's why they're so small, uh, and it was. Municipalities, register your dog with the municipalities, you go back and look at the old tax rolls and it's dog registrations. Because it's been around for so long and and it was, it's antiquated from that perspective. Um, I don't know that any push to do away with it altogether has gone anywhere, but it takes so much time. It costs us more than we recover in fees, we're taking our police officers away from doing. Important policing and serving notice to the residents that. You have to show up to court here and we're going to take your dog if, and it's, um, yeah.
We are not taking dogs, sorry, yes.
It is, it is, uh, it's kind of a terrible process, um, but we, for the time being, we have to do it, we don't have a choice, um, the the legislation is very prescriptive. You must, the select board has thirty days to issue the unlicensed dog civil forfeiture forfeiture warrant, um, and the town clerk. And and many others do a tremendous amount of work trying to educate residents, it's in our tax bill insert every time, Tiffany's been making some great posts. Um, the numbers are down from a couple of years ago, it used to be up around six hundred dollars by the time I got.
Six hundred dogs? Not dollars, dogs, okay, gotcha. Understood.
So, yeah, I think you had just three hundred and forty-one at this moment right now.
And, um, there's a late fee for this of a whopping dollar?
A month, dollar a month.
Hmm. Yeah, that'll encourage you to run right.
It's honestly for a lot of people, it gets very hard, find them, leave them blue, knock on their door and say, here you go, oh, what do you need? What, I didn't, I didn't know about this.
What a horrible role for policing, I I'm sorry.
And and what will wind up happening unfortunately, and we've seen it happen, is it puts us in a, it is what it is, they put themselves in the spot, but it puts us in the bad spot of. Serving a hand summons with a court date. At the second step after we've served letters to everybody, the people that disregard the letters get a summons. When somebody disregards the summons and it happens, they default in court. We get a license suspension and somebody gets picked up for operating after suspension over. Uh, at seven dollar and fifty cent slash twelve dollar dog registration.
Maybe something we can talk with our state.
Yikes. How old is this state law? How old is this state law?
Oh, just research, I'm not positive, it's it's old.
And to this case point, it makes our lives easier, I've had two officers tagged by dogs this year. I don't have to take somebody's word that their dog has had the rabies vaccination.
Oh, that's true.
Go to the rolls and I can see that dog A is registered, if they're registered by fault, they have had their rabies vaccination. Both times my office have been tagged has been by a registered dog, so we're good to go. Likewise, I've had FedEx and UPS drivers show up reporting dog bites, in those situations, it's very easy. Yes, this dog has had because it's registered, uh, no, not registered, not.
So necessary, it's a necessary.
It is a necessary component. To the point that it was originally developed for, which is the rabies issue. Um, most people aren't running around getting bit by dogs, so they don't see that.
I try not to.
Wasn't, uh, today under the rabies shot, it's pretty scary.
It's a.
Go to the hospital, get injected with multiple needles, multiple thugs, it's offensive, very expensive.
Um, thank you, Vice Chair, so in reference to this, we've sent how many letters since the due date?
Yeah, that's a great thing, because this is something that we do that we're not required to do, um, and I don't know every step that they take. Uh, but we do send letters to every unlicensed dog, uh, but we also, because our system supports, um, people to offer their email address. Uh, we also notify people via email, um, and that all happens before it gets to this point.
And we still have three hundred and forty-one? Is it possible to send one more letter and tell them that the select board will be voting on their July tenth meeting to follow through on this? And this is your last chance between now and July tenth to get this accomplished or you're?
Or you can this year, we can deploy that for next year, it has to be issued between June first and June twentieth.
Understood.
Uh, and I actually had a a conversation recently with town clerk about. The, it gets expensive.
Yeah.
Postage is expensive.
Yeah.
And we were talking about ways we could spend the same amount of money and maybe reach more people, uh, than sending letters. Because obviously it's not, I don't say it's not working, but we're still missing hundreds of people, um.
I think they even have a sign up when I was registering the car that said, have you registered your dog? And I was like, oh, yeah, add that on, tell me, so, I mean, I think they're trying.
One of the things that the town clerks association, as I understand it, has advocated for is expanding the window for when people can register their dogs. So it's an annual thing. You you get to, I don't want, not it's an annual thing, but it's it's annual, it happens at the same time for everybody, it's like motorcycle registrations, every year, each lot of injections. And so the, um, town clerks association, as I understand it, is advocated for allowing people to tie it to their vehicle registrations. Because sometimes, depending on your birth months or when you register your vehicles, I don't know what month it is, but there's like four or five months when you can't register your dog. When you register your vehicles. The rest of the year you can, and I didn't pronounce the numbers, but I'm sure a lot more people, they register their vehicles when they can also register their dogs, register their dogs, because you're there. You're doing, you're doing, say that, write one check for everything.
Yeah.
Um, so they've advocated for expanding the window to allow, uh, dog registrations, I think they expanded it a few years ago. Maybe like COVID era, but it's not, I'm trying to block out that.
Well, I have high hopes with next year and having a new power dealers at the town clerks, this number will be down. Um, but. We, we need to make a a decision.
I would make a motion to issue a civil forfeiture warrant as prepared for unlicensed dogs in Barrington as required by RSA four sixty-six dot dot fourteen.
Well called, vote?
Okay, bye.
Go ahead. Thank you.
Well, that's what's happening.
So we, we.
Off you go.
Being posted by handle.
Yeah, hmm hmm. Uh, get to know the rogues in town.
Yes, so I love Tiffany and I think Tiffany and maybe Katie, I don't know, but we have, um, uh, a picture of Indy, our canine officer. And it says, I'm registered to you as, you know, all these outreach.
Yeah, we try. For our dogs. Okay, uh, select board reports.
So, um, I don't, we have not had an additional, I don't think we have, we haven't had an additional zoning board meeting, it's next week, so I have nothing to report to you other than this, a lot of cases next week, so.
Excellent, Mr. Gibson, um, conservation nets, May twenty-fifth and June twelfth. Um. They're not too dumb, apologies, uh, May twenty-fifth and June eighth. Um, Jack Gill is elected vice chair, so. Uh, Doug Doug Logan is chair, Jack Gill is vice chair and treasurer. I really, um, conservation's been really going over goals with coming year, um. And energy committee, we met on six one. And, uh. Dan Federico is at with, uh, department heads in town to get a sense of what how they're viewing energy means and the opportunities in the town. And so, um, we're processing, uh, some of that feedback and forward to more, uh, discussion with department heads.
Excellent, thank you. Mr. Asia?
Uh, school board, uh, met on the sixth of June, they have champions for children, Lord, and Mr. Jim Golders with. Uh, P E teachers and elementary school program company, forty years it's been on.
Wow.
They asked, you know, the twenty-five thousand kids.
Amazing.
He doesn't just do P E, does all sorts of, now the excellence in education award to the ECLC kindergarten team, six members was was pretty cool. Uh, summer school has sixty-seven students, all special ed, they're having hiring problems, uh, some ways and. Basically, that was, they need some paraprofession, a lot of places, so they're also in the. Uh, brunch for people, whoever's, look on the little, some of the teachers discussed. That's with, uh, library trust, we meet, uh, twenty fifth next week. And, uh, transfer station meet twenty-sixth, did finally get the results from the earth days, then there was less. Had less trash than last year, whether that reflects the streets are cleaner or fewer people, and there were seventy volunteers from out that day.
Well.
They have less than a ton of trash. Um, so. Again, it's meeting next, uh, vice assistant.
And another point on the roadside cleanup, remember within the last year, I think it was, we had that recreation. Uh, committee that's been meeting monthly and cleaning up parts of town, uh, and so it could possibly be the effect of that, um. Forget the woman's day.
Yeah, maybe there's a fewer, a little fewer than last.
I see it posted monthly, it's excellent.
And it's.
I used to send my son and his friends out with the John Deere tractor in the, um, that was. Part of you don't get to learn to go to driver's ed until you clean up all of Malago and Stone Farm and. I couple, yeah, no, it's, it's important to teach them.
Okay, um. Onto the rec department.
Did you ever report out Vice Chair Sokoshia?
He's doing that.
Oh, oh, sorry, okay. I thought you were moving on to something else.
Hearing on.
Sorry, sir.
Um, over at the back department, um, they have started a summer concert series, uh, those dates are. July thirteenth, July twenty-seventh, August tenth and August twenty-fourth. I've been working with, uh, directly with Jesse to help get, um. Uh, sponsors, whether they're doing material, um, or volunteering stage. Um, we have all that to work, I've met with, uh, Chris Swenson. As Sokoshia Electric is going to be donating, um, the time and materials to put up. A temporary electric service there for a food truck to go home with the band. And that's going to be right, uh, right in the heart of our town center, uh, right out in front of the Christmas stuff. Um, summer camp starts on June twenty-sixth, um. That's a big date to know, and then, uh, last year, uh, I had my own sawmill and I cut my own lumber. And I donated raised beds to the rec department. Uh, Brookwire Organics, uh, was kind enough to donate some of their composting soil. And as of this past week, they were able to. And as of this past week, they were able to harvest out of their vegetable garden and actually donate it to the, uh, food pantry for Barrington. So good hearted story, uh, all good stuff, all the way around. Kids get taught at farm how to grow their own, but they, uh, they grow them for the people who need it. Um, I also attended the class six, some kind of road committee today. Uh, today was just a brief introduction of everybody and, uh, kind of what their goals were set for, uh, the committee. Um, it was about an hour and a half long and we have another meeting coming up on the twenty seventh, I believe. At seven thirty AM, it is a public meeting. Uh, people are welcome to come and join if they want.
Did they elect a chairperson?
They have not elected, uh, chair or vice chair yet.
Okay.
But that'll probably be on the topic for discussion on the next round. And then I haven't, uh, I haven't gotten to the technology committee, uh, meeting yet. Uh, that'll happen tomorrow. Um, other than that, uh, I think that's all the boards and stuff I'm a part of. Um, that's going to bring us to, uh, well, just there and open up our second and last public comment for the evening. Do I have anybody in house or online that would like to participate?
If you're online, you might need to press star six to unmute yourself. If you're on a phone or if you're on the Teams platform, you can use the raise your hand feature. Like to be recognized by the chair.
I don't see any action.
I don't hear.
I can close public comment. And we do have.
I was going to motion for non-public for purpose of reputation.
Well, would you like to, uh, motion over there?
Uh, I'd like to motion that we enter non-public for purpose of reputation.
We have second. The personnel legal also.
Local vote?
That's part of your motion.
It can be.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so I I would motion for an entering into non-public session pursuant to RSA ninety one dash A colon three for the purpose of personnel reputation and legal.
Local.
Article five.
Let's go, Charlie.
Okay, there's microphone, there's your camera. Welcome back.
Welcome back all our live listeners out there. I'm gonna be looking for a language adjournment.
I'll second an adjournment at seven thirty three, eight thirty three, my apologies.
We'll call.
Alright, go ahead.
Go ahead, thank you for tuning in.